17 to 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Before we get started, I just want to remind everybody, this is a council meeting. If you have anything that you want to add in between, I'll ask for comments. And then if you just raise your hand, we'll point to you and we'll have you come up. If you need to have a conversation during a council meeting, I'm going to ask you to be respectful and step outside, please. I appreciate that. Kathleen, roll call.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCampbell?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Would you please silence your cellphones? We'd certainly appreciate that also.
Okay, tonight, we have some awards. Glad to give these out. And we have some exceptional citizens in the city of Burlington. And we'd like to try to recognize them. Tonight, I'm recognizing one who's very special. I look forward to seeing every time I come down to City Hall. And there's only a couple of people... No, I'm just kidding. That's about to start some trouble up in here.
Yeah.
Exactly. But she's a good one. I give her a hard time and she can give it right back. My daughter saw me get beat up one of these days because one time she was with me and I come and I said, "Yo, Di." And she said, "Yo." I was just like, "What are you doing that for?" It's just one of those things I do. But she's going to be leaving us. We want to recognize you tonight. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian and a phenomenal coworker. You've been an extremely valuable asset to this community and to the staff at City Hall. Your smile and your "yo" is truly going to be missed. Enjoy your retirement. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On July 17, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Diane Hueson. Come on down. Thank you, Di. Lady, leaving us. All right, I got a picture when you're done. Are you coming? Have a word, please? Come on, girl.
That's right.
And thanks for coming down. I know today was your day off. Appreciate it. Well, have you just face us and they can watch your beautiful hair.
I'll ignore you guys. Oops. Anyway. I just wanted to thank you all. And before I start crying, how much I've really loved working with all you guys. And it's been a wonderful 19 years. And I'll miss you all very, very much.
Thank you, Diane. You'll be missed.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll probably find somebody else to say "yo" to, but it won't be the same. All right. This next one, I've known him for a long time. And I admire him. He's committed to Burlington 100% in front of people and behind the scenes when nobody's looking. And that's why I want to recognize him. He does things behind the scenes. And on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your love for this city goes beyond community service. And what you do behind the scenes is recognized and noted. You stand out amongst your peers and you help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On July 17, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Mr. Jerry Rigdon. Come on down. Mr. Rigdon. You're a wonderful friend. You already know that.
Yes, yes, I know that.
We certainly appreciate you. And I am glad to be able to give you one of these with my name on it. Let's get a picture taken together.
You're going to let me speak?
Mr. Rigdon. Please do. Hold him short, my friend. Hold him short.
Do you know what you're getting into?
He doesn't know me well enough to give you a high five.
I know you. Come on.
No. This is given to me for picking up trash, right? Is that what this is about? Okay. Well, I'm not the only person that does it in town. There's a lot of people that do that, and it's a great thing. I don't know why people throw stuff out their car windows, but they do. And it's not just a thing devoted completely, unselfishly. I walk for exercise. And you know how many times I bend over every day to pick up trash? It's exercise! But thanks a lot.
Thank you, Jerry.
If you ever want exercise around 2112 Mason Road, I'd appreciate it. My daughter, she doesn't like exercise like that. Don't tell her I said that. This next one, I've got to know this lady. She's a wonderful, caring person who's committed to this city and the people in it. And I'd like to recognize that. And I heard a statement made about this lady that it made me pause. And I wanted to do this about a month and a half, two months, maybe three months ago. But we're doing it today. So you're being recognized because I see you and I see what you're doing. On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. When others call you a lifesaver, it's worth taking note. You make a difference in this community and it means more than you know. Your positive attitude, commitment, and love for all people help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On July 17, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Vicki Lerner. Come on down. Move to this first. How come you didn't call me back? I asked you to call me. Whatever. You're so tall today. I'm making seizures. When you place on that word. Down there, sir.
Well, first of all, this is very unexpected, but thank you. And I want to thank you on behalf of myself and community action. And there's a lot of people out there that we really do need to help more than what we can. And so with the community's help, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank the Mayor's Award recipients for coming down. And you can excuse yourself. You don't have to stick around for the rest of this. Somebody didn't hear you.
May we be excused?
Absolutely. Since you have the good looking with you.
Thanks a lot.
How you doing? Okay. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed are Item 1 Consent Agenda. Having been discussed or considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And if a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Can you read through that for me? The consent, please?
We have our normal finances, miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette licenses, reports and bonds. We're setting a date for August 7th, public hearing, consideration of property locally known as 1309 South 10th Street, city Burlington, with conditions. And we have appointments, actually reappointments to committees. Parks Advisory Committee, Peggy Hunt. Riverfront Advisory Committee, Sid Carter, Doug Smith, and Elizabeth Van Fleck Salaty. There you go.
There's anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent? I see none. Counsel?
No, we're motion. Oops.
And we're good.
I have a motion to approve all list under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Well done. Okay, this is time set for hearing for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 718 Columbia Street, city of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Publication has been made. Mr. Teslin?
Are you familiar with this house?
This is the sale of the property, 718 Columbia Street, at the corner of Columbia and North 8th Street. This is a property the city acquired through the abandoned building program and looking to sell for rehab of the property. Does need quite a bit of work. I'm going to go through some of the conditions here so that it's clear for everyone. Any exterior changes to the property shall apply for and receive a certificate of appropriateness from the Burlington Historic Preservation Commission. Prior to such work, maintenance and repair of existing materials is allowed. This home is in the local Heritage Hill Historic District, so that requires some, an extra step just for changes to the exterior appearance. Does not affect anything on the inside or portion's not visible and does not affect maintenance and repair of the existing. Defective items shall be repaired as needed. Licensed plumber electrician shall inspect and sign off that such items are in the property meter or brought up to code. Sidewalks adjacent to the property and parking areas shall be improved to meet code standards as necessary. All permits shall be received and codes shall be met as applicable for work and occupancy of the home. Purchasers shall maintain the property and yard and hold insurance on such property upon approval of sale by the city council. Work shall be started within 60 days and completed within 180 days of approval. An extension of an additional 180 days may be granted. Progresses continue to be made. That's something we continue to work with people on. As long as they're continuing to make progress, we'll put them on the timeframe there. But don't want to see someone start it and leave for six months and not continue progress. So failure to meet timeframes may result in forfeiture of sale. Quick claim deed shall be transferred upon substantial completion of the renovation of the home.
And we have a bid already of $500 from Lindsey Sills? Is that correct?
Yep. We have one bid. Anyone else that wants to bid, if they have not completed a bid form, we'd ask that they, if they're the awarded bidder, come up and sign this form so that we have it on record, whoever gets the bid.
Okay. We will... Let me start the bidding. We have a bid at $500. As we move forward, we're asking you to give your name and address and then put in your bid, okay? So we're starting the bidding at $500. Do I have a bid of $1,000?
I'll bid $600.
A bid of $600?
Kelly Hole, 816 Valley Street.
What was that address?
816 Valley.
816. Have a bid of $600? Yeah, just so I can get your... And that way we can get it recorded there, too.
I'm here for proxy for Lindsey Sills, and she wants to bid $1,000.
$1,100?
$1,100.
We'll go $1,500.
I'll go $14,000.
She's gone $15,000.
I'll go $16,000.
$17,000?
$17,000. $1,800 for Kelly Hole?
$1,900.
$1,900 for... $2,000 for Kelly Hole?
$2,100.
$2,000?
$22,000.
$2,200 for Kelly Hole?
$23,000.
$2,300 for Lindsey Sills?
$24,000.
$25 for Lindsey Sills?
Do I have a $3,000?
$27?
$27?
We have another bidder out there, too.
I have $27. Can I have you give your name and address, please? We're at $2,700 at Lindsey Sills for $27?
Brian Anderson from Midwest Cornerstone, 515 North 6th Street, Burlington.
And you want, what did you say, $3?
I'm $3.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. You're good. Help me out. I can't see tonight, anyway.
$31 for Lindsey.
$31 for Lindsey Sills? Do I have a $32? Or we can just say $4,000 and quit playing games tonight? Have a $32 for Brian Anderson?
$3,500.
$3,500 for Lindsey Sills? $4,500 for Brian Anderson? Does she want to just do 65?
$46.
We have $46? $5,000 for Brian Anderson? This is exciting.
$5,500.
$5,500 Lindsey Sills? $7,000 Brian Anderson?
$7,500.
We've never had this before. Hold on. All right, hold on. All right. $7,500 Lindsey Sills?
$10,000.
$10,000 Brian Anderson?
$10,500.
$10,500 Lindsey Sills?
$12,000.
$12,000 Brian Anderson? If she went $15,000, I think that would probably squash it. I'm not sure. No, you can't.
$12,500.
$12,500 for Lindsey Sills?
Oh, I could spend this game all day.
Tell her we heard that. Bless her heart. How much? $17,000 Brian Anderson?
$17,000.
It's a fantastic property. It's going to make somebody a lovely home. Let's do this. We're at $17? We're at $17 right now as we stand. Brian Anderson at $17,000. Okay. At this price, we'll wait a second. $17,500 for Lindsey Sills? $17,600 Brian Anderson?
$17,700.
$17,700 Lindsey Sills? $20,000 Brian Anderson? I know you guys are as excited as I am right now. I could tell. $20,000 Brian Anderson?
She's out.
She's out?
She's out.
Tell her she's been fantastic tonight. Give me her address. I'm going to send her a bracelet. We're at $20,000 Brian Anderson. Do I have any other bids? $20,000 going once? $20,000 going twice? That property is sold for $20,000 to Brian Anderson. This has been a phenomenal option. This was. Appreciate that.
I have a motion close.
Second. Thank you. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 718 Columbia Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
I have a motion to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 718 Columbia Street, city of Burlington, Deboise County, Iowa. That property be sold to Brian Anderson of 515 North 6th Street, Burlington, Iowa, in the amount of $20,000.
Second.
Moved to second. Let's vote on the amendment.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And as amended?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, well done. Well done.
Thank you, Brian.
Well done, no doubt. And thanks, everybody, for being patient. And again, I know we got some people down here that want to share some things. I'm going to ask that you be patient with us. And if you do have to have some conversations, to have them outside till we get done toward the end, then we're going to let everybody get to speak. All right. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Oak Street Right-Away located east of Bluff Road, Burlington, Iowa.
It's a vacation request by the adjacent property owner and by Burlington Truck Rail to vacate Oak Street. They're looking to close the access off of Bluff Road. It is a difficult access with the railroad crossing there. They own the property to the north and south and instead have access to the north of the property at 922 there to better allow flow and access through this property while minimizing some of the steep grade crossing there at the railroad tracks off Oak Street. They would provide back an easement agreement to allow access from the north, on the north side of this building, back to the property here. Is owned by Burlington Municipal Water Works. They have a pump house and some storage back here, and that would allow access to that property through their property on the north side. That is coming through a separate agreement. Also looking, doing a cost share agreement relative to improvements on the grade rail crossing on Agency Street by the Burlington Short Line Railroad. So this does take three readings. Project to see that agreement at the next meeting as well so that everything can be considered before final approval of this. Applicant is here as well if you have any further questions. Andrew Hoth.
Anybody from the audience, any questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
Fine. I move to close as a public hearing?
Second. Moved to second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the first string of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Oak Street Right-Away located east of Bluff Road, Burlington, Iowa.
Second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Excuse me. Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Number three. It's a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with John and Doris Champagne for encroachment of the city right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 1500 Madison Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Teslin?
It's an encroachment request at the corner of Acres and Madison Street. Applicant started to build a retaining wall, not knowing the right-of-way there is a few feet back from the sidewalk. This does have a wider right-of-way than some of the areas of the community. But being so, their retaining wall is on city right-of-way, so would have to have an encroachment agreement to allow that to stay in that location. They are reducing the height of the retaining wall at the corner to allow better visibility on Acres and Madison, maximum of three feet, and the remaining portion up to no greater than six feet in height. But this agreement would allow that retaining wall in this location.
Anybody from the audience, any questions or concerns? Expect any? Thank you. Counsel?
That's a very nice retaining wall. Very nice. Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing?
Second. Moved to second by both of you. Thank you. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve the permanent encroachment agreement with John and Doris Champagne for encroachment of the city right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 1500 Madison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa.
Thank you, Tim. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
All right. Number four. It's a consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Harrison Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements. Mr. Mack?
Before you... Are the plans, specifications for the Harrison Street must be delayed. Do you want to just run it? So what you see here is off to the left, during heavy rain events, the storm sewer system becomes inundated and actually surcharges enough that it lifts the manhole lids off of their placement. And then it actually, there's a sanitary sewer system right there. It causes problems there, and so it goes, it runs over top of the bluff. The plans and specs were done by Vinture and Kim. And what we are doing is we're moving the path of the storm sewer system off into the area that's hatched. And it will, we'd have to require an easement through this process. But it will take the storm through a different path. Get to the next page. The estimated project is to cost about $280,000. It says miscellaneous sewer budget money. Ultimately, we spent that money with the storm sewer project, but we do have sewer funds available to be able to complete this. Jim may be able to explain.
Your dollars are a little bit different than what were originally budgeted. We ended up last year increasing the miscellaneous sewer rehab to $500,000 that we transferred over. And I think this year, we bumped up from what was originally to six feet into the, maybe, is it $500,000 again or even higher? $500? We have several projects that are coming out of the same... The fourth and North project is coming out of this same pot.
As well as the Depot Storm Sewer.
Storm Sewer is coming out of this. And I think you have a fourth project even that...
Patterson Street, partially.
Patterson Street, partially. So we have several projects that are going to be used. We'll fully use that last year's money that's rolling over into the current budget cycle as a, in that fund, as well as this year's amount between the different projects that we have going on. And all of these is, this is miscellaneous sewer rehab. It's essentially projects that were not necessarily planned for in advance. Some of them, they've come up from issues that have arisen, smaller issues that we need to be able to have a source of funding in order to cover.
So after this, we will try and go out to bid. We were fairly successful in receiving bids back on the Depot Storm Sewer project. So we'll probably reach out to the similar bidders. We would probably go out to bid from 15 to 30 days. So I don't know the extent of the project that this would take. Jesse probably would have a better answer. And after talking with contractors at pre-bid. So I don't know if there's another slide or not. Nope.
That's good. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Nope.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve the plans and specs for the 2017 Harrison Avenue Storm Sewer Improvement Project?
Second.
Thank you, sir's. Kathleen, let's vote.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
As have it. Number five. Consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Flow Metering Project. Mr. Mack?
The plans and specs in front of you are for 10 non-contact meters along with four submersible meters. submersible meters and the reason for this is partially for the MSL or the Market Angular South Locust Sewer Separation. We're not actually installing them in the basin, we're still installing them in some of the previously separated basins so we can have an understanding of what our current I and I is and the impacts that they have on the rest of the system, but also at the Market Street lift station. And actually, we received back today sewer master plan proposals and the sewer, the flow metering will help, help be able to try and project what we need to do for the future. Not only that, but we're hoping to tie these meters in and have them communicate with the wastewater treatment plant so they can see what's happening in our system to be able to help plan around that.
All right. And, and the cost is?
I think it's on the next slide. We, the engineer went out and got some quotes prior to about $150,000.
Okay. And this is the fourth one that's coming out of the miscellaneous sewer rehab?
Correct.
Patterson Streets, all out of road use.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
Questions or concerns from anybody from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move the approval of the plans and specs for the 2017 flow metering project?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, ordinances?
Motion for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Denmark Street right of way located west of South Main Street.
Pluck it. Mr. Tisland.
No changes from the previous reading again, vacating the portion of Denmark Street west of, or north and south of 218 and 221 Denmark Street, west of the dead end of the paved roadway into the natural area there. Vacated, sold and combined with the adjacent property owners, the roads in Levitt with the north 18 feet adjacent to 218 Denmark being sold to them and the remaining portion to the southern property owner.
Anybody from the audience have any problems, questions or concerns? Well done. Counsel?
On here.
No, go ahead.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles For Hire of the Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances and deleting chapter 127 Vehicles For Hire Drivers in its entirety.
Second.
One second. Okay. No changes on that. Anybody wants to add on that before we, before the audience? Any questions or concerns from the audience on the taxi cab change? I see none. Counsel?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and end this one. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. You guys have been fantastic. Let's just go ahead and see this all the way through, guys. All right. Now we're going to entertain comments from the audience. I know that I have some that are down here for a lot of the same reason, so I'm going to, I want to let you know, we're not silencing anybody. That's not what I'm trying to do here. Just trying to save some redundancy. I know that some things are going to be repeated and we're going to stay here all night. We're, we're here to work for you, so again, if you have any comments, these are comments that, and let me say this too, they don't let you come. These are comments that you're bringing now that are not on the, on the agenda, so it's not like we can deal with this right now. We're going to hear your comments and then we'll move forward from there. I didn't, I didn't even say nothing yet. Come on, come on.
Mayor, counsel, shalom. David Meyer, 605 Hedge. You have to give me a minute. My heart's beating a little fast. I'm high strung about this. I believe it's an injustice.
Be of good cheer.
You know, yeah, you're right. I'm gonna, I've been written on Oder Island, I think since 1994 and when it was $150. Long time. It was logged, I wasn't given any written notice so I could come down here and vent my concerns, you know, whether or not for or against. And you know, we don't have water there. We have no power there. After, at one third of the time it's underwater and the other half it's winter and when it's underwater after a flood, logs and trees come in and we have to cut them up. We have to mow because it's very moist, it's in the center of the river, like every eight or 10 days. We pay our gas $20 or so for gas, oil mixture and stuff to go out there. To me, this increase of doubling it within the next two years is an injustice. I mean, if Jesus had a spot out there, he'd say the same thing. I mean, we had, I'm honest to God because I'm telling you, there's right and wrong and this is wrong. And like I said, you know, I hear the loggers are coming back next year. I know some of them, so I know they're coming back to the table and I think that, you know, the city has made money since 1950, maybe 52 or whatever. I don't like venting without giving people an option, you know, of something else to do to make money, you know? And I know the city needs money and, but I think this is a wrong area to do it and I can give lots of explanations for it and if the loggers do come back and you vote for it, they ain't planting any trees. Hell, they've already raped the island and the city made like a quarter of a million. I don't know how much exactly, but I know they made a lot of money and I was out there for a week watching them. There was nobody watching them. They took spray cans, spray painted the whole area and then nobody's watching them. They cut log after log after log, made a mess of the place when they left. I mean, dropped trees everywhere so they flowed in, then we gotta clean it up. Year after year. Well, yeah, but you ain't paying to have it cleaned up. These are other expenses that we're paying for and, and I do think, I don't know if this went to three hearings. Nobody was sent a letter for this and I think it's taxpayers, you know, I mean, when's this going to end? Are the kids in this community going to be able to pay this type of a price when you keep increasing and increasing it? I mean, they're not, even for homes and stuff. Are we assessing, will we reassess the value, you know? You know, I don't like coming down here because it gets my heart rate up. I, I prayed for days about this deal and I'll, and I'll tell you, the third day I got a letter from a gentleman and I thank God for this because it was what I was asking for, because I don't like to be silent in justice and this is a serious injustice. If it was you, half and a mow, pay the gas to go out there, take care of your place.
Just let me say this, Dave, we're, we're your friends and neighbors, man. Hold on, hold on.
Do friends double the lease on somebody?
Hold on, again, hold on. I understand you're upset, but dude, nobody's got it in for anybody on Oder Island.
Then why'd you double the lease?
Dave, we can't have a back and forth here.
Well, that's what you're doing. I'm not finished, but go ahead. No, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I'm just trying to remind you that we're, we're your friends and neighbors. We are, I'm just saying, we could talk and you can still get it out. Dude, I want you to get what you gotta say.
You know what? I'm sorry, I can't be quiet about this. I'm high strung about this.
I don't, I don't want you to be quiet about it. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I don't want you to get your blood pressure up. Go ahead, man.
It's all right. If I die, I know where I'm going. I ain't worried about it, so you know? I'm going to let some other people speak and, and you know, I do think in consideration, if you're going to let these dudes, you're making money since 1950 and there's some other people that will come up and show since the 1950, how much increase? Now I started, I think it was 94, 95, I can't remember that far back, but I'll tell you this, I don't, I want to cap at 250, 250 and I think the rest of these people do too because it's an injustice when we pay for our gas, our generators, we pay for our ice, our motors, we, we have to pay to have it cleared and stuff if we're busy. Now myself, I pay my boy, you know, and I pay him to take care of that and do things and other friends to go out there and help me. But you know, we try to take care of the place. Nobody's out there when every storm, the tree service isn't out there. They're not cutting the place up. We have no trash pickup, you know, no, we have no fire department out there, you know? I mean, I'm going to let some other people speak. Like I say, I ain't trying to take it personally on any of you. I have nothing against any of you, but if I was sitting in that seat, my solution would be, city needs money, what can we do? Because yeah, you can't do streetlights, you know, storms come, you need chainsaws, you need gas. I'm aware of all this. What would I do if I was sitting in that seat? I'll tell you, I'd do $35,000 plus benefits and cap anybody working for the city. That's what I'd do and I don't care who they are or what they do. No overtime, no time and a half, $35,000 in cap, because if you look at Quincy and Fort Madison and Kilco, this is happening everywhere. It's got to stop because what are our kids going to do? The other day I was stretching for yoga, I seen like 80 kids and the thought popped in my head, how are they going to afford places? If you keep raising, you know, and reassessing things, how are these people going to have anything? So I've said my piece and I hope that, you know, it went through to you. Like I said Shane, if, if you were in our place and you were out there for 12, 15 years, some of them since 70s and 80s and taking care and mowing and weed eating this and spraying for bugs and spiders, there's lots of hidden expenses and nobody vented because nobody was given a letter. You know, if you'd given me a letter, I'd spend time in prayer and say, look, this is an injustice. You know, I wouldn't have to convince God any different. He would've said, I agree totally. So shalom and thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Mark Serrita, 712 Remick, Burlington. I've had, my parents had the cabins up since 76. I took it over since then, been out there. The loggers came through. I've still got logs and stuff coming up through, through the ground where they just drove over it and packed it in. They tore my yard completely up, tore the land up. I mean, it's bad up there. Still getting stuff floating in. I still got a bunch of logs and stuff for the cut behind my place. I gotta go around, still been cutting on them. Anyway, I disagree completely and I'm working right now, so I gotta go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Mark.
And Mike Khan has number 28 and he's coming back from Vegas right now and he told me to say something for, to give us hell, so.
Thank you, Mark.
We hear him, we hear him. Thanks, Mark, for coming down too. If there's anybody down here about Oder Island, if, if there's something you want to add that you feel like that hasn't been said, we don't want to silence you. Again, we just want 20 people get up saying the same thing, so come, come on down.
John Archer, 210 Edge Water Beach Road. I have lot number 26. I also, I raised on that property. As a kid, my parents owned it and what they talked about is we have a heart and soul in these places, okay? We're, we're taking care of them, okay? I mean, if you go to the beach, you know, the public beach, which is great that they're doing that now, but they just trash it because people don't respect it. We respect what we have up there, okay? Like they say, we have no, we have no services. It's all us, okay? And you know, and part of the agreement is, you know, we can't have four wheelers because they tear up the land. If you guys want to go for a boat ride and show you the huge ruts in the back, that was our backyard we could walk through. Now you're tripping over, pushing your ankle and it just have piles of logs everywhere. They cut down hollow logs and they just, they're just scattered everywhere. They actually landed on my property because I was after the, oh eight, took my cabin and they just trashed it. Piled stuff up right on my own land and they, they came back and did a few things to make it look better, but it's still pretty ugly because of them. So they've really done a lot of damage up there and we don't get any compensation for that, okay? The other thing is if you were a small business owner and you sent out a letter to your customers saying that I'm going to double my prices in two years, you would have some choice words, wouldn't you, Mr. Scott? I would, like, no more, okay? I mean, it's not, it's not right, okay? I mean, 30% is bad enough. I mean, if you're building up 30% and it'll be doubled in two years, how would you react to that? And that's, that's how we are, okay? And we're taking it personal because of the pride we have in it, you know, the heart that we have in it, so we want you to take that consideration, please. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I like hearing the passion and the heart behind your property. I, I think that's, that's good. Yes, sir.
Monty Schaefer, Cabin 33, Oder Island. Been there 18 years. I don't want to be redundant, so I'll cover things that haven't been. Number one, these loggers weren't supposed to bother a heron rookery that, that was up there. It's gone. I've now got a bald eagle nesting down at the end of my chute. If the new loggers come in and it's gone, the DNR is going to hear about it. Thirdly, the ice, the floods, I'm on the backside of the island. It's silt and insubad. There's another four, four months out of the year, I can't get a boat to it and you're going to raise the price like that? I don't think so. I'll be out of there. Thank you.
Thank you, Monty.
Bradford Hines, 717, South 12th Street. New kid on the block. I got lot one on Oder Island, which is the South Point. I cleaned, these guys know more about the log than I did, but I burned up a chainsaw, cleaned it up, my place. I, I'm a catchall. The island comes like this. Also, people choose, I'm not out there as often as I'd like to be, but I've had two minor children, three and six, have their feet cut with glass. I am out there with the rake, raking glass. This season, they're using it more. You don't want to run off the wife and kids, but the lack of respect, I mean, some people in our community think it's public property. I'm cleaning up glass, cutting up firewood, just come out a week later, somebody's took it, moved it down and burned it. I mean, you call law enforcement, I'm sorry, nobody on boat duty. We're paying taxes and kids are getting hurt, you know? I've tried to get insurance, but due to the situation out there, you can't get insurance and you have a percentage of people that do not respect other people's property. I mean, we have that in town, but out there is a lack of law enforcement, but yet we don't have lack of taxes. I mean, if you put all this money you're collecting, put somebody on duty, protect our property, fire service might be a little different, but that's not the case and it's kind of hard to tell somebody, I don't know what to tell your kid. I would bet nine out of 10 people here don't even put glass on their boats. I mean, I know I don't, I ain't saying libations aren't consumed, but it's not allowed in my boat and when kids are getting hurt and people pull up, 2:00 in the morning, oh, there's a stack of firewood, that guy's cabin, you know? I've just vented. I think this should go for further discussion. Obviously, you got enough people concerned about it. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Chris Hill, Oder Island, Lot 18. I'm the second generation up there, but what Brad was trying to explain to you and he failed to mention was there's an actual sandbar at the end, his cabin's closest to it, so the public utilizes that all the time. They're the ones leaving the mess, litter, just don't care. Maybe they should be required like in states like Michigan and stuff like that at a lake. Put a placard on your boat, allows you to do that. It generates revenue that way. But yeah, I'm looking to pass on to my kids too, you know, the cabin when I'm gone, but we've done a lot of work, a lot of raising. Everybody takes care of it. We was out January 28th and hip waders.
It's like, yep.
Hip waders in the ice, right after the ice just took all the posts out from his cabin. If he hadn't been on my door at 8:00 AM, cabin would've been down on the ground. You would've lost that lease. That's how much we care. We go out and we take care of them, have a lot of fun and it's a family thing. Fourth of July, fish fry every year. Get all family together. But anyway, it, you know, I've been out there for 47 years on that same lot and you average that out, you know, you've taken in revenue just on the lease part, stay, average it out, probably taking in 225, 250,000 just on the leases because they were 75 bucks when we started and now you're wanting to increase in, plus we got taxes to pay. You sell trees off of it, which generates quite a bit of revenue, okay? Those people, you know, I can't even go pour sidewalk from Burlington without paying a fee for a permit and have an inspector there. If it's over 2% slope, I gotta tear it out, pour it back. These guys come up and I mean, they destroy it. We had, there's waterways going off Otter Bay. We'd go back and enjoy that, duck hunt, do whatever. They just pushed all the trees they didn't want down in there and now we got a chute coming right through our property just from the water being, you know, diverted because of all these logs and stuff. He and I, all of us, I mean, we go back and we'll chop on a little bit, but you know what? After wind we had last week, now we got trees laying down that are right next to us that we have to take care of. My brand new deck's railing up broke. It's just, and that's what we choose to spend our money and do it, but there's going to But there's gonna be a breaking point at some point, and to double the, double the lease is just pouring salt in the wound a little bit. Anyway, you're gonna hear a lot more about it, but that's what Brad was trying to explain, the south end of that island. And people there for a while, there's a couple of open lots, people are squatting on it, you know? Who are we to go tell people they can't be there? Those are people leaving the trash, bottles, stuff like that. And you're, just one other thing that I should've mentioned earlier, the sewer project going down over the bluff on Harrison there. Mark McCoy and I actually rebuilt the lower one. It's out in a river where it ties in and goes to the waste plant through the river.
You and who?
Me and Mark McCoy.
Mark McCoy.
Nineteen eighty-four.
Never heard that name before.
Mark Senior. Mark Junior's your age. But we was down in there, in the river, working. And you go ahead and have him design and engineer down to that box, we got a thrust block around there, but the pipe carrying it to the, to the plant's not gonna hold all the water you're gonna try putting into it. So I don't know if they're planning on redoing that pipe, but as soon as they contain all that that's running and eroding now, you contain all that and run down that hill, just gonna blow that apart then.
Thank you, Chris.
Greg Junior, Lot Eleven. One simple point, I paid my first lease on Otter Island in nineteen-seventy-seven, I believe it was twenty-five dollars. I just want to know how it's cost the city anytime since then till now to maintaining leases? What, what's the cost to the city other than just charging us money for us taking care of an island, for us taking care of your property, basically? What is the city's expense every year to maintain Otter Island, other than that loggers go in and rip the hell out of it? Plain and simple. Why does it cost the city any more money?
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Anybody else that does not have last name Pearlstein? Anybody else?
Hey, not my idea, idea phone. And you know what? It's hard to know where to start. Let me try and cover a couple of fast points because I could probably talk for a couple, a couple of years on the subject, but let me try and cover a couple of things that nobody mentioned.
Can you give us your name and address, please, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Steve Pearlstein, I have Lot Number Five on Otter Island. I've had a lease for thirty-seven years and nothing matters, but I once worked for the Planning Commission or actually the Planning Department in other life for a bunch of years and I was on the Riverfront Committee for probably fourteen, fifteen years and I was the chairman for eight years. So, uh, I probably know something about something. But, and by bringing that up, I do have a question, because I understand that a couple of people from the Riverfront Committee visited with the council and had some recommendations. And I'm not sure when that was, but I assume it was after October of last year when Joanne Bauer and Doug, Doug Smith came. Okay? What's interesting about that is Doug Smith's appointment expired ten-twenty-two thousand sixteen and you just appointed him tonight. So assuming he came here after October, he didn't even represent the, officially, okay, regional, uh, I'm sorry, the Riverfront Advisory Commission, okay? That's correct. But while we're on the subject there, I did go to the Riverfront Committee meeting last week and talked with the members. I, I also asked to see their minutes of the meeting that they discussed and they talked about the, uh, the increase in the, in the lease, okay? They had a, they had a meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, okay? I talked with the chairman and some other members previously and I was invited to the meeting and I was invited to talk, okay? The first thing I found out, that the meeting that they talked about Otter Island and amount was suggested wasn't even a legal meeting. According to the chairman and vice chairman, who were not present, they don't even know who ran the meeting and it was only four members there, okay? Another lady, which is really interesting, okay, and, and not to bore you, okay? But the last meeting they had before that, before the February one, was November fourteenth because the Riverfront Committee doesn't meet on, uh, December and January, okay? So it, the meeting was, uh, the minutes were read, okay, and approved by Joanne Bauer and seconded by Nancy Cavassu, whatever it is, okay? Which interesting, this Nancy approved the minutes of the November meeting, okay, at the February thirteenth meeting, okay? But she wasn't even appointed, she was a new member, she wasn't even appointed to the Riverfront Commission until months after that. I'm trying to figure out how this lady, how can you approve minutes of a meeting that you're not even a member and you're not even there, okay? Which is interesting and I do have, uh, I, I do have the, uh, the dates of the appointments and so forth, so, which is just procedural matter, okay? You know, the, the deal is that no matter what the Riverfront Committee recommends or doesn't recommend, and they didn't recommend the raise that you proposed, okay? I, uh, I think if you look on their minutes, one lady proposed a fifty-dollar, I'm sorry, a, a raise to get to five hundred hours within the couple of years, okay? She brought that up, it, that motion, it died for a second, okay? It wasn't even, it wasn't even part of, it wasn't even part of the deal, but somehow that got in here. But regardless, the city council has the final say-so, so, you know, you don't really have to go by what, it's, it's what you gentlemen say, you know, go, so, okay? So we understand that, okay? We don't have a big problem with, uh, you know, some of the provisions of the lease that deal with inspections, although there is, there is a problem, okay? The thing is that one of the new items that is mentioned is if things aren't cleaned up and fixed, possibly, you know, the, the owner would have to be charged for it. Thing is that most of the cabins up there don't have insurance, okay? You can't get insurance. At one time you could. The people that have insurance, most of them are grandfathered in. I was grandfathered in, but four years ago I got, I got canceled out. Now, the reason you get canceled out is because first thing, it's on an island and it's raised, okay? There's no fire protection, it's exposed to the elements and it's just open and insurance companies, they won't, they won't cover it. And I can probably give you a list of a lot of insurance companies, okay? So what happens next is somebody says, "Well, listen, you don't like it, sell the cabin." Okay. Good, good idea. So my cabin's for sale. Here's the way it works, okay? Unless somebody has cash or unless somebody has enough money on, you know, gets it from, uh, from, you know, from something else or can work in something else to do it and come up with cash, banks won't lend money. Banks will not lend money to any cabin on the island. So, and of course, a bank won't cover it because you can't, because there's no insurance, okay? Because there's no fire protection. So we're left with a cabin that, you know, whether we're, whether it's sweat equity or whether it was built, you know, from scratch, you're left, you're stuck, you're stuck with it, okay? So that's one of the big problems, okay? One more fast thing. When they talked about the logs and the messes there, what, what happened is the river for the last, at least two and a half years, probably more than that, I probably, and I got the figures off the Corps of Engineers from their, from their gauge, uh, site that they do. The river has been up twelve feet or more most of the time. Here's what happens when it's at twelve feet, well, women. Most, eighty percent of the cabins are close to fourteen feet, okay, from water getting either under them or right in front. What happens at a twelve-foot level where you, where you don't have very many, uh, feet from the river, every time it rains, the water goes up. So the water is either right at your steps or underneath. So you have limited use of the cabin. Now, there is six cabins that are set back, but they still don't have a front yard. They still don't have the, the enjoyment of, of using, of using their land. The other, the other problem is that's the frontage. And the frontage, there are so many trees that got, uh, eroded from the high water that they just fell over long land. The other big problem is, the people mentioned, is the loggers. What they did is they cut that, they, they cut down whatever they cut down, but they only took the middle of the tree, okay? They took either five or six-foot sections. They left the top and they left the bottom. When the water comes up, everything floats. Where does it float? Most of the time, it floats towards a river and it floats to your cabin. So as people said, you have, you have logs and brush in your front, you have in the back, it wedges under your cabins, it wedges under your docks, you're stuck. The, we, we probably wouldn't be in this situation today if, uh, what happened was, it looks like on, um, February twenty-seventh, you had a work session and you talked about it and you decided to put it on the consent agenda. What the problem is on the consent agenda, nobody knows about it. So it got passed and then last, last week, we got a letter and they go, "Wait a second, what's this all about?" Okay? Nobody even knew it, okay? So, you know, I don't want to say possibly it could've been, you know, discussed, you know, before, okay? So, thanks for your time. But I do have one more thing. If, uh, any, if the council would like to see what we're talking about, you know, whether it's me or we got a bunch of people here, we'll take you in a boat and show you exactly what you're talking about, so you know we're not blowing smoke. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
Just for the record, um, all the Pearlsteins are fantastic. I don't know how they came from you. Did I say that publicly? But anyways.
Well, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, I got Steve Pearlstein.
And I, I kinda lie and they say, "Well, they could be adopted."
Yes, sir.
Dave Meyer, Six-O-Five Hedge, Shalom. I want to make this clear to the council about number one. For years and years, on Fourth of July weekend and other weekends, I've seen literally hundreds of tents and people on that, uh, sandbar. And I'm thinking, what, these people just gonna come here and do this and leave their mess? And at that sandbar, number one, I wouldn't want his place for nothing, because I mean, they, they do leave glass, bottles, everything, because I went there once, I was like, "Nope, I'm done here." And then their bathroom facilities, I mean, you've got a hundred people there, you know, where, where are they going? You know? And, uh, that spot, if the city, I don't know how you can do it, because I know there isn't people that go out there. But, uh, or a couple of signs saying, you know, "Leased land, stay off." You know, I don't know, but I know, I feel sorry for that guy that's got number one, because he just got people pulling up every day that I go out. There's people there and they just leave whatever. They don't care and then they're gone. And so are you understanding at the bottom of the island there, the, the big sandbar, do you know where I'm talking about?
I do.
Okay. All right. That's it.
Thank you.
Anything, anybody else that can cover?
Make that point again.
I'm Brad Sanders. I have forty-three. It's off the backside of the island. I'm probably the lowest person out there. Most of the time, mine's underwater. When everybody else is still enjoying theirs, I'm underwater. Fourteen-foot, my patio that I have out there, I have a fire pit in the patio, it's underwater. This last weekend was the first weekend I could actually enjoy the weekend, because everything's been underwater.
Right on.
And that backside of the island, I don't even remember the last time somebody actually leased that part of the island. I went in there, I cleaned it completely out. It's, it's beautiful back there now. I've, I've, I've had people asking, "Who's the guy back on cleaning out the island back there?" Because I did such big, big work back there. But I don't have a cabin back there, so I can't enjoy nothing with the water. I mean, at the price of two-fifty, I was like, "I'll just deal with it." You know, but if it's gonna go up like it is, it's not even worth even, even having that part of the island, because half the time, I can't even use it all.
What's your name again?
Brad Sanders.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Is there, and I don't want to, I don't want to shut anybody off that has something to say, but if we're, if, if we do have other stuff to discuss, are you here for, you're not here for Otter Island?
Yes, I am.
Oh, you're here for Otter Island too?
Leah Zizer, Six-One-Two-Five, Pegtown Road, Minneapolis. We have number thirteen on Otter Island. Printed off. This is the water levels just this year, up to July first. And I didn't go down to twelve feet, I just went to thirteen feet.
Thank you.
Seventy-six percent of this year has been over thirteen feet. If you go to fifteen feet, which is actually flood, flood stage, that's forty percent of the time. It's a lot of time underwater and I know you were quoted saying it's prime riverfront real estate. It's, it's an island. It's not riverfront. It's an island.
I'm gonna ask everybody to, let's just keep it, keep it cool tonight.
I would call riverfront, you know, like downtown, where you could get there by a car, but you do have to take a boat and we don't have any utilities at all. And I go out there by myself and the amount of effort it takes me to get there, I look like a gypsy in my boat. I've got cans of gas, I've got three coolers, one with beverages, one with food, one with just ice, so I can stay for a couple of days. Prime riverfront real estate? I mean, where, where's it gonna cap? Where's it gonna end? Because we do have so much money invested. You know, you know how much those concrete pillars cost to put on top of that cabin or underneath that cabin?
Thousand dollars.
A little more than that.
All right, we're gonna really do it. We're gonna really do it.
I'm in a lucky situation with my husband having the capabilities that he has to get stuff to the island and help people out on the island. If I didn't have that, we wouldn't have anything.
Thank you, Ms. Zizer.
We pay property taxes, some people don't. Let's look at how many people don't pay property taxes out there. Sixteen of the forty-three lots don't pay property taxes.
How many of them pay property taxes to Burlington on those lots?
So who, who's it go to?
It doesn't go to Burlington. That's not, that's not in the Burlington city limits. It's, it's owned by Burlington, but it's not in the Burlington city limits.
We, we can.
Most of those taxes go to Tama Township.
Who the hell's Tama Township?
Again, this isn't, just, just, just to remind everybody, I'm sorry, just to remind everybody again, this is, this was not on the, this was not on the agenda, so we can't have a back and forth right now.
So just a couple of things I want to say that we can think about in the future. Maybe the lease should be different for the people that have a building versus the people that don't. And we don't have property lines. So who, there's someone right next to us, they don't have a building, they're just leasing their land. Well, you know what? They, what they think is their land is getting a lot closer to mine and I'm the one that's been maintaining it for all of those years. So how are they gonna come in and start parking ten boats in front of my spot with all their tents and all their stuff? And every time the wind blows, guess where it goes? Guess who cleans it up?
Thank you. Thank you, Leah.
Real quick to clarify it, and, uh, of course, it, it, Tim is right, but, but, okay? We don't, Burlington doesn't receive any taxes. It goes to Tama Township, okay? But we do at least pay taxes. It go, we do have a portion that goes towards the Burlington schools and the rest of it goes to the county. In effect, the county, since the city is in the county, the city does benefit from our taxes, even though directly that portion, that little portion, you know, goes, goes to it, okay? So it's, it's sort of a technicality, but the couple bucks that you're not getting, you've been getting a lease on some of these people, like me, for thirty-seven years, okay? Uh, I don't want to say I got nothing in return. I, I, I got a nice spot and it was beautiful, but it's downhill. Thank you.
Hey, any comments from the, hold on, hold on. Are there any comments not regarding Otter Island? And if there are, do we have any that aren't going to be anything that we have not already previously heard? Sir, you were standing up. I'll get you, Dean, right after this gentleman that was standing up. Yes, sir?
Paul Vorwerk, One-Fourteen South Woodlawn. I've got lease number sixteen. Now, I guess you guys have got a flavor of what's going on here and, uh, not to drag this thing out, but what's the chances of us getting this lease price changed? Maybe back to where we were or a little more? What's it gonna take to do that?
Counsel, we need to put this on as a discussion item, I believe. And so that these folks could have input that they didn't get a chance to have when it was presented to us by the Riverfront Advisory Board.
That would be our step, Paul, would be, put it on our next.
Yeah, that's what we're here.
Session, we can talk about. Then we can talk about. We can't talk about now.
I agree. I agree. So if you guys will go with us on that, let us know what we can do. And, uh, I think Leah has maybe a good idea that people with structures, and I've got a lot of money invested there, and I can't walk. You got me, you know, by the short hair, but some of them are gonna walk and you're gonna lose money. So where's the middle of the road, okay?
Thank you, sir.
I don't pay taxes.
Thank you, sir. Hold on one second, please. Hold on, hold on one second, please, sir. Hold on one second. Hold on one second, please, sir. Hold on one second, please. I'm gonna, I'm gonna remind you guys again, this isn't a free-for-all, okay? So I'm gonna ask you, please be respectful. To talk, we're gonna invite you to the podium, okay? Just a reminder.
I'll keep you posted.
So I'm complete here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Dean?
I got good news. I don't own a cabin. And I, I like to swim in the water, but I don't like, oh, no, no, just leave it there. Okay, my name is Dean Finacy, I'm a rentorium. I got other things that I want to talk about. Number one, how's it going on Mount Pleasant Bridge?
James?
Mount Pleasant Bridge.
Mount Pleasant Bridge, Mount Pleasant Street Bridge is fifty percent design and sixty percent design. Looking for, trying to get approval and get on the state's bid cycle.
Good.
January, so next March or so, hopefully. Hopefully next March, we could see, uh, construction potentially for, begin.
Okay, other thing is, I know this is a broken record, but I still think it'd be nice if we did some for Cascade Bridge, maybe have a, a telethon for Cascade, for Cascade Bridge to raise money to, to build it. Uh, I still think that it would be nice, we, because people use the big park, it'd be nice and go back and forth to get in there. Uh, I still think we need more public housing, but that was that I talked about and I, I run up for a while, people realize that you, you're the city council, that you cannot negotiate for people who work for the city about their benefits and about their salary. The only person can do that is the governor and lieutenant governor, am I right? Because somebody told me that was, that you can't, that's a no-no, because the governor goes against with all of the union for all the cities and the counties and the state.
We negotiate at a local level. However, in response to part of the structure that, that we, we have a lot of limitations just by state statute and in terms of what we are allowed to do and how we make comparisons. just by state statute and in terms of what we are allowed to do and how we make comparisons. So you're somewhat correct that we, we are, we are limited on what we can accomplish, but we do negotiate locally.
I think that, I think the state needs to tell the people, we appreciate your work, but it's about time you, you start paying more of your fair share for healthcare costs and retirement costs. That's, and also you hope you had a happy 4th of July, didn't get too wild, bang, boom, bang. Uh, this is what our democratic system is about. We have this discussion in most countries, they, they don't even allow it, they don't even dream about it. May the Lord give you this praise, give you the wisdom and guidance and peace be with you.
Thank you, Dean.
It's always a pleasure, Dean. Thanks for coming down tonight. Any other comments, anything we have to address tonight? Yes, sir?
I've got another question. Where am I, why am I sitting?
Again, we can't answer your question, but anyways, go ahead.
I just wanted to approach this up. Where I sit, my, I, my lot sits, it sits in the opening of Otter Bay.
What, what, what number are you?
Uh, 43. The Otter Bay opening right there is the main opening that goes into Otter Bay, that everybody comes in there. Well, my patio is probably 25 feet off of that and people just come flying in and out of there with my dock there, my kids playing, us playing, swimming, and they just come flying in and out of there. So I just kind of wanted to know if, since you guys, that's your guys' property, you lease out duck hunting blinds back there and everything else, is there something that could be done, like a sign there saying no wakes slow, children playing, something, you know? Because people aren't used to me being there because there hasn't been anybody there for years. And I'm one, I probably flew through there too, but there's no way to ever actually lease that lot that I know. And it just, it's dangerous for them to come flying through there and then it's, it's, you know, banging boats up against the docks and all that. So I just kind of wanted to know if there was something that could be done to slow people down through there, besides me yelling at them all the time. Thank you.
I got that written down, so.
Bradford again with Otter Island. Not to be, if we're going to research this, we'd appreciate the fact to look into that the wells at the fertilizer plant are having troubles and they're, this is rumor, but a lot of things happen, obviously, without us knowing if it's going to be brought up for discussion, see if there's some validity. The fertilizer plant would like to bring up the pool level in our pool by three to four feet, which is going to directly affect not just us, but everybody in the pool. Because there are already, certain entities are already upset that the pool's going down to work on the Riverfront Bridge, or excuse me, floodbowl, nervous. Certain entities seem to get their way. It'd be interesting to have somebody with the resources to find out if there's any validity to that statement. Because there's a lot of people, if the pool goes up as an average of four foot, which can make flooding a lot more dramatic. But, you know, not everybody looks out for a little guy on, on an island. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brad.
There are no little guys on the island in Burlington, as far as I'm concerned and, uh, I'm telling, I know sometimes perception, people think that, that we don't care or that we're blowing people off during the last, at the end, we have end time, uh, comments at the end. These are things that are, that are not on the agenda, so legally, we can't ha, have back and forth and address these things. We have to get them on the agenda. That's just the rules that were set up. But I just want to reiterate to everybody, we're glad that you came down. This is the process, this is how it works. You guys are going to come down. Sometimes we make decisions that you don't like and people have, are upset about, so then you come down and you share with us. And we wrestle around and say, well, hey, did we make this and we should have did this? Or is this something that we should have done? They're going to have to understand. It's all part of the process and you guys are doing that. Sometimes it doesn't always work out well, sometimes some decisions are made wrong and sometimes to make, have an op, you got to break some eggs. But, but again, I do want to, I want to thank everybody that came down for Otter Island. Again, this wasn't a personal deal to try to, we're going to get the boaters. Um, yeah, I, I'm not on a river, you know, I don't spend a lot of time on the river and stuff like that. I used to, but I just don't have the time. So, um, we have to have you guys come down and, and share with us and let us know if, there's something that we didn't do right. So again, I just want to remind everybody, we're your friends and neighbors, we really are, you're friends and neighbors. So this isn't us against you, let us know what you, what the issue is and we're, we're going to try to address it the best that we can. So I hope that, uh, when we, when we shut her down here, I'll be able to shake some of your hands on the way out. So, uh, let me get, let me get one.
When will be on the agenda, I guess? So we all know when or not.
Okay.
Two weeks.
But, but that's a work session. The next public input would be the first meet, meeting in August. You can, you're welcome to come, you're, the first Monday of August. You're welcome to come and listen to the work session, but there'll be no public input at, at work sessions.
I don't, I think it's, in a case like this, we should allow them to have some input at the.
Or invite somebody for them. Okay, hold, hold, okay. And leases are, all right, well, this is the soonest that we can get it on. We're going to put it on the work session so that we can, uh, uh, deal with the problem and we'll, we'll see you guys, I'm sure, again, in a couple of weeks, so.
What do we pay? They've already increased it.
I don't want to pay the increase.
Me neither.
Okay, hey, hold on, everybody. Again, we're still in the middle of a meeting, so if you want to talk and back and forth, we're, we're going to, we're going to, hold on, invite you up, bro. As soon as we're done with the meeting, uh, if you guys want to have back and forth again, this wasn't on the agenda. You guys came down to share and we heard you, we hear you, we hear you. Jim, did you?
Well, the only thing I can say, if they're going to pay, you pay what's in the fee current, you know, the revised fee based off of what you've approved. If, if they were to, if people were to do that and you were to make a decision to, um, revise those rates, we'd have to do reimbursements back to folks for the, the difference between the amounts. I don't know what happens with lots that don't have the payment made if they were to delay making a payment. We haven't, I think in the past, we've had a few that where folks have had payments not occur by the time that you got to the end of July. And I think life has gone on when, when that's occurred, so.
Okay. Ho, hold on, audience. Let me, let me make sure I got everybody squared away. Did everybody get a chance to say something now? I'm not talking about Otter Island, I'm talking about anything else. Okay, because we're going to carry this over until when we get done. Mr. Tisland? You're good. Kathleen? Tim Scott?
Nothing new.
I just want to say it was a beautiful scene down in downtown Burlington, vintage days. I don't know if any of you guys went down there, but it was phenomenal. Uh, great, great showing and, uh, it's just good to see downtown Burlington really starting to pick up and boom, uh, that's a good thing for our community. And again, it's good to see you guys from Otter Island, it's good to see Dick. Uh, he busted me up in Hy-Vee. He said, I don't want to bother you, but, I said, come on, Dick. So, uh, again, that's how this process works. Nobody's got it in for you guys. We want, we want you guys to be, uh, to be able to enjoy the islands and, and for years to come and leave it to your kids too, so. Mayor Proton?
I was just going to ask Nick if he has any update. Do you want to talk about the Seal Coat projects or no, yes? Okay, all right.
I have nothing this time.
Okay. City Manager?
Yeah, I assume you were going to come and talk about Vineyard Street at the least, but just a.
Mr. McGregor? No, stay back there, man.
I'm going to talk about Agency Street first, if that's all right?
We have updated traffic control plans for, uh, Agency West. As you will see in the top picture, uh, is the intersection of Roosevelt and Agency. We will start some of our, uh, signage and, um, detour notice, um, north on Highway 61 and south on Highway 61, as well of Roosevelt, uh, east of Roosevelt on Agency Street. As you can see, the taper will begin, um, at the driveway area by, for Jimmy Johns, Perkins and Big Lots. Um, and then it'll transition through the intersection at the Frontage Road. And if you want to flip it for me? It's on the backside. Sorry, those are the same. Um, and so the northbound, or the traffic that was in preview, that would be in the north lanes moves south, or into the south lanes and will then transition out, back into their normal lanes of travel, as you can see in the top picture, through West Burlington Avenue. And this will be for phase one of construction. So they'll go in and they'll tear out the north two lanes, as well as the center turn lane between the railroad tracks and the Frontage Road. And then they will expand, um, further north and then they will pour back the concrete and then they will flip traffic from the south lanes to the north lanes and then they'll rip up the south lanes and then they'll go back and pour the center turn lane. And then phase four of construction and for, phase five will be the intersections of West Burlington Avenue and Agency and then the Frontage Road. Um, I will forewarn people that traffic during that time period is going to be highly limited. There will probably be very limited access at all to the Frontage Roads and traffic north and southbound through West Burlington will probably not be allowed to go through. But for the time being, this is what we have for traffic control plans. This will take, uh, probably a good month or so, month and a half, uh, to complete this phase. The timing of this unfortunately does align with some of our work at the roundabout. Um, it can, it's hard to avoid. It, um, it, you'll see signs and cones go up on Thursday, the 20th. The roundabout should be completed in about three weeks, give or take. Unfortunately, with the 90-day working day, that already puts us into November. It could get a little dicey that late in the year, uh, depending on what kind of weather we get. Luckily with concrete, we should be able to pour concrete even, even though the, the temperature's a little cooler, asphalt, we would have problems because they wouldn't be making it. So, um, I, uh, if, if all else fails, I hope that we at least get the lanes widened and maybe can attack the intersections at the beginning of next spring. But my hope is to get done this, this fall yet. So, Seal Coat. As some people may have noticed, uh, they, there was a subcontractor in town doing the Seal Coat roads. Um, they were on South 14th, I think, that area, Parkway Avenue, Dunham, they're kind of all over the place. Unfortunately, they, they went in and they reclaimed the former Seal Coat Street and they left it, I wouldn't say tidy, um, but the, the general contractor is, is not going to be in town for a couple of days. So it, it looks like they just came in and left a mess. The general contractor will be back in to clean it up and make the road surface the way it needs to be. So please bear with us as we try and deal with some contractors, try and get the work done. And what was the third thing that we were talking about?
You have an open house for the public?
Open house, the, the vineyard area, the drainage, um, it's been an item, uh, that kind of got pushed back last year with engineering changes. Jesse has been working on plans. I sent out letters to all the property owners that it will affect. We're having the open house, um, next Monday on the free, the free Monday at the library in one of the meeting rooms. And we'll be discussing kind of what the project will entail as far as a project. I think Jesse's got costs. One of the things that we'll discuss is, is culverts. Per city code, culverts are the property owner's responsibility and we, we are, we will explain that to the property owners. Now, if you as council members should decide to do it otherwise, I think we'll probably have a price tag in front of you, should you want to complete all of it. But we won't, we will simply at that meeting discuss and say that this is city code, this is the way that we're, you know, led to try and draw these plans out.
What time is that?
Five to seven o'clock. Well, I guess there's no really end time, but it was definitely 5:30 next Monday at, I don't know what meeting room, right in the entrance to the, to the northwest, so. Is there anything else?